...meeting to order, and it's Thursday, February 4th, 2021. Full board present here for the selectmen. Town administrator Leo Martell is recording for the public to be put up on YouTube and the town website. And Donna is here doing our Zoom meeting. We appreciate that. She's the Planning, Zoning, and Building Department. What did you say? Coordinator?
Office administrator.
Office administrator. Okay, we have some old business with the regular meeting minutes. Can I have a motion on those?
Yeah, I'll move to approve the regular minutes of January 28th meeting as written.
Okay, was there any amendments on that, Leanne?
Nope.
Okay, motion's been made. Do I have a second?
I second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the non-public minutes of January 28th. Not as written with two individuals, two words changed from singular tense to plural tense.
Okay, and because those have employees in there, do we want to seal them? It's just general discussion?
Not really. I don't think so.
Okay.
And I'll second his motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll make those to the plural tense. There's the two S's I gotta add to two words. Do I need anything changed if that's all right?
Yeah.
Okay, that's it for old business.
That was the change, Tommy. You see those S's I put in?
Yep.
Those are the S's I put in grammatically.
Okay. Okay, I'd like to open it up for a quick public comment. Nothing from Leo. Anybody on the screen have a public comment for tonight? Did you guys hear me okay?
Are they muted?
Yep.
Okay, so no public comment. Okay, thank you.
I'd like to make a statement.
Mike, Mike Comiskey'd like to make a quick statement. I'm gonna make this statement about this, Mike.
Okay.
Want me to do that first? Public hearing?
I was gonna talk about why we had this closed business meeting format today.
All right, let me do this first. I know how you sign right after. Okay, as part of the town business tonight, this is a town of Dunbar, Board of Selectmen, public hearing on our proposed budget and warrants for 2021. And Mike would like to speak to why we're having this as a Zoom meeting as well for the public.
First of all, we cannot close this to the public, though we did ask our town officials and town volunteers if they would come in on Zoom. That would facilitate, if we had people who demanded to come in, we have space for them. Problem is, if we cannot social distance and we have an overflow of people, we have to adjourn the meeting and reschedule it for a larger facility. So by coming on Zoom, I say thank you to the town volunteers and town chairman and all that kinda, everyone, department heads, thank you, because he made it so we could, did not have to cancel this meeting and move on in event we had an overflow. So my hat's off to you. Thank you all.
Okay, that being said, under new town business, this public hearing on the 2021 budget and warrants will be here. I'm gonna do a quick overview, and I'm gonna start with the revenues and then go to expenses, and then I'm gonna do the general budget and then the warrants. And I'm gonna start off that way, and I'm gonna go over kind of the totals on each of the lines. And if anybody has any questions on any of the line items in between there, because there aren't a lot of changes from year to year, I'll highlight the changes, and if you have anything further, just go ahead and raise your hand or ask, and I will try and follow through that way. Okay, starting out with the revenues. Land use changes. We brought the current use tax from $20,000 down to $15,000. It was reduced by $5,000 based on the prior year's revenues as well as new houses that we see coming up in land with current use on it. Yield tax was kept flat at $10,000. Other taxes is just a line item of $1,000, stayed flat. Interest on taxes was at $15,000. That stayed flat. Okay, coming down, we've got licenses, permits, and fees. That was $675. That stayed flat for motor vehicles. We had $702 in there from last year's actual, and we decided $675 would be a good number to stick with. Building codes and permits stayed flat at $20,000, no change. Other licenses, including all of the dog licenses, dog fines, marriage licenses, vital records, all of that came together, and there were no changes on that. That stayed flat at $10,000. Okay, revenue from other governments. It looks like there's no governor's grant on two payments, so that was reduced from $322 to $298,850. If you go down and you look at the recycling, we dropped the recycling income from $30,000 last year to $20,000 this year. We're trying to keep a fairly conservative budget due to the unknown recycling pricing, and we had it at $18,970 actual this year. And part of that is because of the way we've had to change things due to COVID-19. Interest on deposits went from $3,000 down to $1,000. Our total interest last year was $16,650, and so we reduced that to keep it more conservative. Rental on town property, we are going to raise that building that the town owned on Kimball Pond Road, which means it's gonna be demolished along with any other outbuildings, so there'll be no more town rental, so that is reduced down to zero from $5,400. So our total budget this year was $1,141,948. The actual this year was $1,219.283, and next year, or this year requested, is $1,097.432. So if we take that deduction, it gives us a excess revenue to surplus of $77,335. And so 2021 proposed is $44,000 less than 2020 projected revenues. So we've reduced the revenues to try and follow what the actual income will be to the town during this time. I'd like to know if anybody has any questions on the body of these revenues at this time. Any questions in here?
So David, this is John Trotter. So what happens if there's any overruns on any of the line item?
Well, if you have overruns on the line item, John, as you'll see further when we get along in our budget, a lot of times these things will come, the excess revenues will go back to the taxpayers at the end of the year. And we've tried to be, as a board, the last three years, four years that I've been here, very conservative with our revenues so that at the end of the year, we have some options with trying to balance the town's budget.
Okay, so yeah, so these are just the revenues that we went through right now?
That's correct. So far, it's just revenues.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Can I get further comment?
Yep.
The only question about those numbers at the bottom of the page that you're showing, the $1,97,432, does that reflect the revenue used to surplus? Or the actual expected expenditures?
Those are the actual expected revenues for this coming year that we're gonna put in our budget to use as a budget number. And it's $44,000 less than last year.
Does that number include the $77,000 of excess you have this year?
It does not, because we're gonna apply that $77,000 in our warrants further on, and I'll show you that as we get to it. I'll point that out.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions from the public? Anymore from the board?
I would just like to point out that because our revenues are down, at the end of the day, you're gonna see a potential small increase. If the revenues even stayed the same, we would have, we would be at almost zero increase in taxes. Just keep that in mind. We're operating on a very conservative budget. We don't know where all the state revenues are gonna be, and the revenues are a driving factor of how we spend. We're spending conservatively because revenues are gonna be conservative. Thank you, David.
Okay, now I'm gonna go to the expenditures. You get that up on the board?
Yep.
Okay, I'm gonna again do these as the total line items at the end of each group, but if anybody has any questions on the individual items through that group, most of them stayed fairly flat, but you can ask, and don't be afraid to bring them up. Okay, in the executive box, we've got an increase from $131,312 to $135,459. Most of that is that 1% raise that we had put in there for a total increase of $4,147. Coming down to election registration and vital seats, that went from $77,282 to $76,193. That's a decrease of $1,089. We only are gonna have one election this year, as opposed to we had four elections last year, and that's where that, that's where that ended up.
You had to... Just wanna talk about the second election we did budget it for.
Yeah. There is a second election that's gonna come up. One of our state representatives has resigned, so we did budget for that separately, to have a second election for that state representative sometime during the year. I'm gonna look here underneath Financial Administration. You're gonna see that it went from $13,500 to $20,000. That's a $6,500 increase. Our audit contract is up, and that's an increase on the bid for our town audit. We did get several prices back on that, and we chose to go with the company that was providing services for the town already, and so that's where that increase is coming in. That number had stayed the same for the past four years, I think, right, Leanne?
Six years.
Six years, so it was due for an increase, and it's unfortunate that it all comes at once. The treasurer's position, we moved it from $7,127 to $8,000 even. That was an increase of $873. We noticed that position had had an increase in several years, and we had second, second year in a row, we had requests on that. And so we looked at that, and we're gonna be going down some of these elected officials later in the year when we're working on our town employees and elected officials. Postage went up from $5,612 to $7,000, and that's all just a process. Linda gives us the stuff that we need to send out for postage, and Leanne does, and so that's just a standard increase for postage. Fees and services went from $8750 down to $2,500, so that's a $6250 savings on that Printing went from $5,000 to $5,200. That was a $200 increase. Our telephone bill went from $4,300 to $4,500. That was another $200 increase. Training went from $1,250 to $1,000. That's a savings of $250. And education went from $4,280 down to $3,000. That was a $1,280 savings. So when you look at the overall on the financial administration, it was $116,305, and the requested share is $18208 with an increase of $1903, total increase. Okay, down to the next department, we're looking at the Assessing Department. That Assessing Department had $27,174. They're at $29,834. There's an increase on the computer support size from $64,96 to $71,46, and the rest of it is a 1% pay increase. So the total in that line on the Assessing Department went up $2,660. The next section was Legal. Legal stayed exactly the same. We shifted around the Selectmen's Legal went a little higher, and the Board of Assessors' Legal went a little bit lower. The reason we took the Board of Assessors' Legal down is because the lawsuit that the town was in with several other towns for the power lines has been settled, and the Board of Assessor doesn't think that we're gonna need as much money in their legal, and we have a couple other road issues coming up in front of the Board of Selectmen that we're gonna end up needing some more legal on. But the overall budget was a flat, no change. We just shifted the money. Okay, under Personnel?
David, I was just curious, how did we make out with the utility?
The towns won, John.
Towns won?
Yep, so all the towns won, and it worked out in our favor, and they're still working out the rest of the settlement paperwork. So we haven't seen the final numbers come through, but it's been projected that the attorneys at the different towns, how many towns was it? 200 towns together?
I don't recall.
Several hundred towns anyways prevailed, and they're gonna use our attorney's calculations for the new assessment values. So it looks like we're gonna prevail. Public Service did appeal it, so, or EverSource did appeal it, but it does look like the towns are gonna prevail in that, so.
Yeah, so the fat lady hasn't sung, but it's good.
Yeah, it went in the right direction so far.
Can I just make a statement on that?
Thank you.
John, for your benefit, I'd just like to say that what we did win is the formula that our assessor was proposing before the boards. The utility appraiser was using one that was based on the 1941 assessment, so there is still going to be some reimbursement to them because we need to adjust our assessment down to the formula that's been accepted, but that's still substantially higher than what the utility attorneys were proposing. So we technically won the settlement.
Yeah, and now it's S and S U C?
Correct.
And John, we'd good budget for those different settlement options so that we're covered.
Through our overlay.
So the town shouldn't see any large shortfalls. Okay, going down to Personnel and Administration. Social Security went from $39,929 to $42,785. That's an increase of $2856. Retirement went up from $123,636 to $144,740. So a lot of these costs are fixed, the increases on them. We also put in health insurance from $89,314 to $97,783. We're calculating six months in there for a full-time police officer as part of the replacement plan for the chief. So that's what those increases are on there.
David, the retirement, the state shifted it to the towns, and so that many towns are hurting. Thing is, we're hurting at school board level, and we're hurting at our level, that we have to pay a little bit more towards retirement. They're shifting the cost more to the towns now.
Okay, so when you look at that overall line, this year's budget was $306,197, and this coming year will be $338,990, $32,000 increase. Planning and zoning had a deduct. It went from $18,220 to $16,391. $1829 deduct there, mostly looks like due to postage.
Yeah, we shifted it to the office and the consultant line we dropped.
Okay, government buildings. There's virtually no change. It went from $250,292 to $250,629, $337 increase there. Cemeteries stayed flat at no change. Their budget was at $15,700, and their budget stays at $15,700. Insurance went up slightly. It was $29,906, and the new total on that is $32,379 for a $2473 increase on that. Okay, Police Department. We have a new full-time police officer with six months worth of expenses in there in that total. That line item got reduced from $48,293 to $25,012, and that's six months for a new police officer. And the reason that line was adjusted is because we put all of their fixed administration fees back in that previous section I spoke about. So the police had a total budget of $485,914. They're now gonna be at $472,227, and that's a decrease of $13,687 over the prior year. Okay, I'm going down to the Fire Department. If you look, the largest line change there was the Mutual Aid Compact. It was at $27,851, and the new is $31,597 for a total increase of $3746. That was a fixed cost that had to be adjusted. The Fire Department's total was at $116,133. It's now $119,627. Building Department was at $75,758, and it's now $77,179, and it's up $1,601, and that increases the 1% increase in pay for that department, for the employees in that department. Going to Emergency Management, that's a $1,000 line item with no change. Highway Department had just a slight increase. It was $572,848, and it's now $574,713. And again, we have one full-time employee in there with a 1% payroll increase. Okay, Solid Waste and Disposal. First line item went from $50,0561 to $53,548. Again, all the part-time and full-time employees both had 1% payroll increases, so that's included in there. Administration for Solid Waste Part-Time went from $91,395 to $88,000. Last year, we used $75,536. That's a decrease of $33,95. Going down further, all the way to the bottom down there. MSW went from $71,341 to $76,460. That's a $51,190 increase. CD removal went from $13,638 to $14,657. That's a $1,019 increase. So this department, Solid Waste Disposal, went from $277,214 to $284,440 for a total increase of $72,260. And most of those costs, as you can see, were in fixed areas that we can't really control or change. Our Welfare Department went from $14,899 to $14,960. That again is a 1% payroll increase. Not much of a change. Parks and Recreation was flat at $400 with no change. Memorial and Old Home Day had no change at $6,000 even pretty much. The Library went from $96,228 to $1,093,18. The trustees returned surplus to the library in 2020, their excess surplus. So the total budget last year was $26,58202. The new budget for this year is $27,13248. So that's our proposed budget. That will take care of the expenditures. Does anybody have any questions on any sections in there? Anybody from the public?
So David, this is John again. It looks like the solid waste increases are probably due to COVID, which I'm kinda familiar with, and we've seen the same thing where I work, and you know, doesn't seem like anything else is out of whack.
No, there really isn't. There's a 1% increases for the town employees, part-time and full-time in there, and other than those changes that you spoke about, we're starting to see some increases on those different line items now for the recycling. But you're right, when we've had to do kind of single sourcing it, we've ended up with more trash getting left back for the town, so those revenues, we knew, we've watched them all year long, were, were gonna be down slightly.
Yeah. My only other comment though, David, just a little explanation, the Fire Department, the mutual...
Mutual Aid Compact.
Yeah, mutual aid.
That was one of the big items that was, that was an increase.
Yeah, it's a fixed cost that we get into with the existing surrounding towns, and when John explained it to us, there's not much we can do about it as part of that mutual aid compact that we're part of.
Based on population.
So why did it go up though? Any idea?
Population.
It's based on our town's population versus the other population, and I think it's over our growth of population that we've had that increased it this year.
Gotcha. So that's how it's, that's how it's based on the population?
Yeah. You know, a lot of people think, oh, new house is gonna bring taxes in for the different towns, but again, there's different things that affect our town all the way through our budgets, you know?
Understood. So again, the bigger, the bigger we grow, that number will continue to raise.
That's right.
It makes sense. You know, we'll need more help.
Yeah. And I'm sure this balances out with the other towns as they grow as well, that mutual aid compact in each town we can adjust it.
Yeah.
Did you guys see any other sections you have numbers or questions on?
I'm good.
Everybody else from the public good? Okay. Anyone go to the Selectmen?
No, I just, with the Fire Department, I'd just like to make a comment that as Dunbar grows, we're gonna be, we're gonna have to move eventually from a volunteer fire department to some full-time employees, and that's gonna hit the wall at bad. But the thing is, but it's a fact of life. If we grow a little bit, we're gonna have to have a fire department to support the growth, and I'm just gonna leave it at that. We're doing, I think the board has made some, working with the Fire Department, has made some increases in the way we reimburse the volunteers, but the volunteers, these are numbered. I'll leave it at that. I salute them for being the volunteers they are, but we're growing.
Do you think I should do the warrants next, on that switch, to review?
Yeah, that might work well. We're gonna explain that event, that new goal for the numbers.
I'm gonna go into the town warrants now, and then I've got a review sheet that we're gonna cover that gives the actual tax increase for what our proposed budget is for the year, and go over a review of all the numbers, including our revenues and our expenditures and the budget, and how it impacts us this year. So I'll do the warrant articles first because that's an impact on there. So we've done the revenues, we've done the expenditures, and now we're gonna go ahead and do the warrants for this year. So as you, as we review each warrant, if you have questions, we'll go through them that way. I'm gonna waive the standard articles on warrant number one to choose necessary town And I'm also gonna waive warrant article number two, which speaks to the public hearings we have in reference to zoning board changes. Article number three is again the zoning board changes that we had public hearings on. I'm gonna waive that. And I'm gonna start off with article number four to see if the town will raise and appropriate the sum of $2,713,248 for the general municipal operations with $295,82 to come from unassigned fund balance surplus. This amount excludes all appropriations contained in special or individual articles addressed separately. Everybody can see the town budget there. We just went over the revenues and expense. That brings our town budget to two million, seven-hundred-and-thirteen dollars, two-hundred-and-forty-eight. Does anybody need me to read those individual line items off again? We can see them all. We can see where they derive from. There's not much change over last year. Quite rather get into the warrants themselves. Can you slide it down so you can see the top?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so starting up at the top, you see that we had our total budget on the previous page less our revenues, which we've already gone through, which was one million, ninety-seven, four-three-two. And then you're going to see we've offsetted that with two-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand, oh-eight-two from our surplus balance. So that's the balance we had left over in last year's budget that the selectmen have chose to apply directly to our overall budget to reduce this impact to the voters. So we have a net to be raised from the taxes of one million, three-twenty, seven-three-four. Everybody see how we derived that?
Head's nodding.
Okay. All right, so we'll start off on the warrant number five to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of fourteen thousand dollars to be added to the reevaluation of capital reserve fund established in two thousand and three for this purpose as summarized in the capital improvement plan. This sum to come from taxation in 2021. This has an impact of four cents. Does anybody have any questions on that? It's fairly standard. It was set up in two thousand and three, and that's for our reevaluation. Do we want to take a vote on these individuals?
You should be doing it.
Okay. I'm going to say that whether the select board want to have a vote on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's for article five.
That's for article five. So it's three to zero. All three selectmen are in favor of this article. Any questions from the public on that article or warrant?
Dave, how much is in the reserve fund now?
The reserve fund now?
Five percent?
Um, what we're going to leave in there or what we, you can see up above, we only implied two-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand, oh-eight-two.
I think he's asking what's in the reserve. Capital reserve.
Oh, in the reserve fund now?
Stand by.
We have it on the back of the page here.
Oh, I don't think I printed them, Dave. I'll have to get that. Do you want to continue? I'll get the trustee of the trust funds.
Right here.
The trustee of the trust funds?
No, you have it. Excess surplus in revenues is three-hundred-and-sixty-six thousand.
Dave, if you want to know how much is in the capital reserve.
What's in the capital reserve?
Oh.
Where it's four point? What is it, four point?
You're saying just on that warrant article, what's in there?
I think, gentlemen, I think it would be helpful for you to have that number for each of the reserve funds you're going to be addressing in the warrant.
Okay, she'll print that out so we can read that, okay?
Question will come from the warrant.
Okay. We did review this as we went through them individually, so this is kind of an overview of those meetings. So she'll go print a copy of that, so we'll have that. Well, she's getting that.
Okay, that's a reevaluation warrant.
I thought you were talking about the total excess of our budget now.
No, I just meant for this, um, revaluation capital reserve fund.
Okay.
The trustees just gave me their report yesterday. And as of December thirty-first, there's fifty-four thousand, seven-eighty-eight in that reserve, and this will be added to that for the next year or this calendar year. Yeah.
Okay.
Do you need a point of order?
Yep.
Do you want to go back and do, uh, number four and take a vote on number four?
Do you want to do that after you explain the surplus from the summary sheet?
You want to wait till after the summary sheet?
I think it might be easier to explain it to the public.
Yeah, just so they can decide on that. Okay. Okay. Did you hear that? Okay. Randy?
I think it was John who was asking.
And that was Randy.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, and we'll try and give you those totals as we get down through them, Randy. Thank you for that question. And we decided to wait on article number four. That was our previous discussion so that you can see where we're getting that unassigned surplus from when we do our overall review at the end. Okay. Article number six for the warrant to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of twenty thousand dollars to be added to the transfer station vehicle or equipment capital reserve fund established in 2014 for this purpose as summarized in the capital improvements plan. This sum to come from taxation, and it's an impact of five cents. We expended most everything out of there last year.
Yeah, there's only seven thousand, one-hundred.
Seven thousand, one-hundred ninety.
So there's seven thousand, one-hundred ninety dollars in that now. And we're asking to put twenty thousand dollars into that. That will take care of any vehicles, equipment, skid steers, anything they might need in the future for that. Any questions from the public on that? Okay, a vote with the selectmen, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Three to zero, all three selectmen in favor. Moving on to article number seven to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of sixty thousand dollars to be added to the fire department emergency vehicle capital reserve fund established in 2014 for this purpose and as summarized in the capital improvement plan. This sum to come from taxation in 2021. The impact is fifteen cents. I'd like to speak on this quickly. This number had gone down to forty thousand for several years in a row when we tried to do some increases on other capital reserves within the town. Uh, we decided to bring it back up to sixty thousand dollars. We have a tanker that has a leak in it this year that we're going to be replacing the body on, that you're going to see further in here. And so it's going to deplete a lot of funds out of there. We want to bring them back up because we have a, a fire truck that's over twenty years old that we're going to have to replace shortly within the next few years. And it's going to cost somewhere between four-hundred and six-hundred thousand dollars to replace, so we're trying to watch that real closely and make sure that we have the funds in there to try and keep our balanced budget for the taxpayers. Any questions from the public on that line item? How much is in the fund now, we?
Two-seventy-two.
Two-seventy-two, sixty-six.
So in that fund right now, there's two-seventy-two, twenty-six. In that fund right now, this will add sixty thousand dollars to it. Any questions from the public? Okay, going to a vote of the selectmen. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
For article number seven. Three to zero in favor of the article. Okay. Going on to article number eight to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of up to one-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars to purchase a new tanker body and install for tanker two. And to fund this appropriation by withdrawing up to one-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars from the fire department capital reserve fund established in 2014 for this purpose. No amount to come from taxation in 2021. So this has a zero impact because they're going to take it out of that fund we just spoke about. And that's why we increased that fund back up to sixty thousand this year. We're going to try and continue that. We did get two proposed prices. There's only two companies still doing this type of rework and not doing brand new. So this recommendation came to us from the, um, fire chief, John Wigan. Any questions from the public on that? That body is, that body is leaking now. It has been patched three or four times over the years, and it doesn't look like it's going to withstand any more patching.
Yeah, Dave, Bob Leonard?
Yep.
Uh, just a quick question. So if the math is correct, on, on article seven, we have two-hundred-and-seventy thousand, two-twenty-six in there now.
Yep.
We're going to add sixty thousand if the warrant passes. So that'll bring us up to three-hundred-and-thirty thousand, two-twenty-six. And then we're going to withdraw one-twenty from that, so on that, at the end of the article seven and eight, it's going to be two-hundred-and-ten thousand, two-twenty-six in the fund?
You are correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions from the public? Okay. Vote to the selectmen. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Article eight. There's a three to zero from the selectmen. Okay, going on to article number nine on the warrants to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of fifty-four thousand dollars to purchase a new police cruiser with equipment and installation of equipment and to fund this appropriation by withdrawing twenty-two thousand dollars from the police special detail revolving fund established at a special town meeting on May ninth, two thousand and eight with the remaining thirty-two thousand dollars to come from taxation in 2021. This will add eight cents to our, impact our tax rate. Now, to give you guys the long and short of this, we had Chris come in last week and review his vehicles with us. We have six vehicles um, now at the town, uh, running from the police station. Without getting into the ages of them, we have two older vehicles with a lot of mileage on them and that just barely pass inspection. We expect those vehicles not to be able to pass inspection this coming year. And with a new officer coming on board, we need to keep updating our vehicles. I know I had spoke with the public about doing a vehicle every two years. And I established a, um, capital improvement fund, which has how much in it for the police vehicles now?
Real new. It's a thousand dollars.
Yeah, it only has a thousand dollars. I established that last year. And, uh, you'll see on the next line item, we're going to start putting money into that. So every two years, we can hopefully replace one of the patrol vehicles and have that as a standard revolving thing. We spoke with the chief about it. We spoke with Chris about it. And it does look like something that we'll be able to do so that these vehicles with the special detail revolving fund and the capital reserve will be able to be funded fully without anything coming from taxation on the next vehicles that we're going to need.
Dave, you like to say something?
Go ahead.
This, uh, what this actually does, this helps us put it, put us into a program of standard replacement every two years. Problem is, we have such an old fleet, we need to bring them up to a certain standard before we can implement a revolving program. And this is, this actually brings us up to a certain standard.
We were hoping that would have happened last year, but we have two vehicles going out of our fleet this year. And with the special duty and the police officers that are on duty at one time, including the chief, uh, we need these vehicles to keep this department running.
Yeah, it's actually two vehicles for the possibility of a third.
Right.
And for those who don't know, what the police special detail revolving fund is, when you see the, uh, construction on the side of the road, you have police officers directing traffic, that's where we get our cut. The police officer gets paid, the town gets paid for use of the vehicle, and the, uh, the safety's kept for the public as far as the watch out for the construction. Is that, that, some of the money that we get goes into the fund to offset future purchases.
Any questions from the public on that vehicle?
More of a comment, Dave.
Yep.
I think it would be helpful to be able to tell the, uh, year of manufacture and the mileage for each of the vehicles in the police force.
We did that at last week's meeting, Randy. We had the, uh, Chris Remlark come in and go through the list here. Mike gave me a copy of it here. So.
And, um, my comment was more, I think it'd be helpful at the town meeting.
Oh, okay.
Yep. Information being shared.
That's his presentation.
Yeah, so we're going to, we're going to have that as part of our presentation when we go through it. But we've got two vehicles that, uh, Taurus sedan and a Crown Vic that are two-thousand-and-eights. Those are the ones that we think that will not make that cut this year. Then we go to a twenty-twelve, um, a twenty-sixteen, a twenty-seventeen, and then a twenty-twenty we took this year. So uh, we will have that as part of our presentation during the town meeting.
I agree with, with Randy's comment, and also what, what have you been spending on maintaining of vehicles too?
Well, I know that, um, we had a couple of maintenance line items that were twenty-five-hundred, and we had another one that was fifteen-hundred, so we are starting to put some major maintenance into them. And actually, the chief did the bodywork himself on the, on the, uh, green car, the sedan that he drives around now. And what he's trying to do is keep that car in use until he is no longer with the department. Uh, he's, you know, a year away from that, it looks like, for his retirement plan.
Yeah, so my, my line is you either, you pay us to work on the vehicle or you, yeah, either, you either pay to work on the vehicle or we work the vehicle.
Yeah, so it's, this was kind of our last year with those big expenses on these vehicles. We think that, uh, they're pretty much going to be done with after that.
Understood.
Okay, bringing it back to the selectmen.
Dave, Chris has got something.
Chris, go ahead.
Um, I just wanted to specify, uh, for the public that this specific vehicle will be replacing, uh, the two-thousand-and-eight Ford Corus, which is the chief's vehicle specifically. And the good part about that is, you know, we got thirteen years out of this most recent chief's vehicle. There's no reason why we can't get a comparable tire out of this new vehicle. So it's going to be replacing the two-thousand-and-eight Ford Corus that, uh, barely passed inspection back in, uh, September.
Chris, why don't you go over the fluid film that you guys applied to each of the vehicles now?
Sure. Um, so, uh, starting a couple of years ago, we started doing a fluid film to each vehicle in our fleet to try and, uh, fend off rust when we have the salt and sand during the winter time. And it has certainly helped prolong our vehicles. Uh, but moving forward, any new vehicles that we get, we're doing that right out of the gate. For example, the twenty-twenty that we have, uh, that we just bought and put in service in December, uh, the first thought we made after we picked up the car was the fluid film. So we are certainly doing our best to keep these vehicles, uh, you know, operable and in good condition. Uh, and as one of the board members explained, the, the chief actually had to do patchwork on the Taurus, uh, to a rust spot to make it pass inspection. So it's certainly time to retire that vehicle. I don't, I, I'm not certain it's going to pass inspection again, so this replacement vehicle is specifically assigned to the chief of police, so we could probably expect at least ten years of longevity, if not more, where it's only assigned to one person. Thank you.
Any more questions? Okay, bringing it back to the board for a vote on article number nine for a warrant. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Three to zero vote. Okay, going to article ten on the warrants to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of ten thousand dollars to be added to the police vehicle equipment capital reserve fund established in 2020 for this purpose and is summarized in the capital improvement plan. This sum is to come from taxation in 2021. It's a three cent impact. Okay, this goes to what I was saying earlier. I'm the one that asked to have a capital reserve. I didn't understand why the police department didn't have one and every other town department had one. So last year, we set this up with a thousand dollars in the fund. And now, if we do this every two years, we'll have twenty thousand dollars in there along with the special detail revolving fund. We should have slightly over what the vehicle cost will be every two years to replace these vehicles and have very little come from taxation. And to keep that so that it keeps our tax level kind of flat every two years. Any questions from the public on that?
No questions, just a comment. Good job.
Thank you, guys. Going back to the board. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Article number ten, I go three to zero. Article number ten, a three to zero. Okay, going to Article number eleven, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of fifteen thousand dollars to be added to the Highway Vehicle Capital Reserve Fund established in two thousand and twelve for this purpose, and is summarized in the Capital Improvement Plan. This sum to come from taxation in two thousand and twenty-one, and bringing it to a four percent, uh, four cent impact. Okay, I'm gonna speak to this real quick. This is a fairly low number, and the reason the number is low is because just this year, we took receipt of our, our six-wheel, our six-wheeler. And, uh, so we have a new six-wheel dump truck and plow truck, all fitted up for the town. And in the previous year, we took the small one-ton, the five-fifty, and had that replaced. So right now, that department with vehicles is sitting pretty good. And, uh, so that number, we've kept down fairly conservative, along with the blessing from the road agent. Um, so we can increase some of the other ones, like the fire department capital reserve fund, where we are gonna need that money. So... And looking at his need, he allowed that fund to come down a little bit, so we can bring the other funds up and try and balance these warrant articles. He's been very, uh, very willing to work with the town and adjust that, so.
Comment?
Yep.
We currently have seventy-one thousand, four hundred and ten dollars in the fund. And that new truck we just bought cost over a hundred and fifty thousand. How much was it?
Hundred and eighty thousand.
Hundred and eighty thousand.
Yeah, yeah.
So, uh, you can see by keeping this in there, even though it's a small amount, um, it is gonna keep that funded. So when we replace those trucks, uh, we seem to be getting close to twenty years out of these trucks, so... Um, I think that's a pretty good, pretty good time for the amount of use to get it. Any comments from the public? Nothing? Okay, going back to the board, all in favor of Article number?
Eleven.
Eleven?
Eight, eight.
Aye, all in favor? Aye. Okay, going to Article number twelve, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of one hundred thousand dollars for additional costs associated with paving. This sum to come from taxation in two thousand and twenty-one. The tax rate impact is twenty-five cents. This is the standard hundred thousand dollars that we've been putting back to paving of the roads, uh, to help Jeff out with his budgets to keep up. At some point, we're probably gonna do a bond because the rates are so low right now, to get our roads caught up. And we'll do the bond over a period of time where the impact of the taxpayer will probably be only this same one hundred thousand dollars, or the twenty-five cent to the impact, even though it's in a bond form. And that'll get our roads through town, at least our through roads, caught up to where we believe they need to be. Um, we decided not to go into the bond subject this year because we wanna keep our town meeting fairly quiet. And we feel that, uh, when we change over to that bond type item, it might have a lot more people come to the meeting. So we decided to, uh, keep this as it's always been in the last five, six, seven years, to have that hundred thousand dollars come right at town meeting, where people can vote on this warrant article. Any questions?
Totally understand what you're doing, but in my opinion, that hundred thousand dollars and it requires even more to be part there at the highway budget.
Right.
Period. And I totally understand what you're doing and, but it's gonna be a change in the, the way that, that is, that is doing it, you know, that we're going about doing it.
Yeah, we have fallen, we have definitely fallen behind in maintenance of our roads, and it's gonna require a bond down the road.
Oh, yeah, and again, and, and people are, and when people understand what a bond is gonna cost them, it's gonna be a hell of a lot more than putting it into the, uh, the yearly budget.
Right. So we wanna, we wanna be able to lay out a proper structure at the town meeting for a bond, and we didn't feel that this was the year to do that.
Yeah, and I totally get it. And again, people, you know, people don't get it either, so, but... And I'm not throwing rocks at you, it's just my thoughts.
Yep. And we've, we've seen that as well, John, and we've been keeping it in our, you know, the back of our minds the last couple of years, and we're watching the bond rates and they're so reasonable right now, it doesn't make sense not to do it. But we didn't wanna do it this year with the limited participation we plan on having at town meeting.
Understood.
Plus, it was, it was a short span into where he could figure out what we wanted to do. You know, we came up with it lately and didn't have enough time to do the full research, so it would be better to present it next year if that was gonna happen.
He's gonna solicit public input at a, a public hearing for the road, for the roads in the spring. And that's where, that will be input to help develop his plan.
Yeah. And John, we've talked with the road agent at our last couple of meetings ago. Um, when he develops that plan, we're gonna have a public hearing on it and try and go through the proper steps so that we can notify the townspeople of our, our wishes, and to make them understand that even though it's gonna be a bond of a big amount of money with the interest rates that are there, when you spread it out over ten years and whatever our bond ends up being, it will be no more impact than they're seeing right now, year to year.
Yeah.
So, once it's balanced done...
Fortunately, because the rates are so low.
Right. So we wanna try and take advantage of them, hopefully, before they change.
Yes.
Okay, bringing this one back, Article number twelve to the board, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Article number thirteen is a warrant, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of six thousand, six hundred dollars for the purpose of improving access road and to widening the corner in Page's Corner Cemetery, and to authorize the withdrawal of said funds from the Cemetery Trust Fund Maintenance Care established in nineteen eighty-eight. No amount to come from taxation. So this is no impact to the tax rate. Uh, we did meet with the cemetery trustees several times on their three warrant articles that are on here. And, um, we have adjusted their numbers up and down so that they can do all three projects that they're looking to do, and you'll see the next two after this, uh, with adjusting their numbers and separating out and making a plan where they're doing their projects over a couple of year period of time. They're asking for much less money than they originally came to us for. And so Mike is gonna look up to see what numbers we have in the fund for this. And they're using sixty-six hundred dollars out of that fund.
Twenty, twenty-four, six-hundred, six-six-six.
Yep, twenty-four thousand, six hundred, sixty-six dollars is in that fund, of which they're gonna be using sixty-six hundred dollars. Any questions? Bringing it back to the board, all in favor of, uh, Article thirteen?
No.
Yes, for me?
Yeah, the problem is, I wish they mapped out or planned out what they wanted to do over the next years. I give them credit, but I, I think they're taking an awful lot. I don't think that is, uh, such a demand for that road as some of his other projects, if he wants to get them done. So I'm gonna have to say no.
Okay, so two nay and one yes. And again, at town meeting, we'll let them speak to each of these warrant articles. This is just the selectman vote this time. Okay, Article fourteen, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of up to eighty thousand,
eighty-five hundred dollars for the purpose of improving the Corman's area and Page's Corner Cemetery
with cobblestone edge, walkways, and hardback. Three-quarter inch gravel around the lots, and to authorize the withdrawal of four thousand, two hundred, twenty-eight dollars from the Cemetery Trust Fund Maintenance Care established in nineteen eighty-eight. And furthermore, to withdraw two thousand dollars from the Cemetery Expendable Trust Fund established in two thousand and sixteen. And further to withdraw two thousand, two hundred and seventy-two dollars from the unassigned fund balance surplus. Estimated tax impact is zero dollars. Okay, any questions on this? No questions from the public, bringing it back to the board?
I would just put the fact, this is probably phase one of what he's trying to do in improving the Corman's garden. So he'll hardly ask for phase two next year. I'm in favor of this.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Three to zero on that one. Okay, Article number fifteen of the warrants, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of up to five thousand dollars for the purpose of tree removal in Page's Corner Cemetery, Center Cemetery, and East Cemetery, and to authorize withdrawal of said funds from the Cemetery Trust Fund Maintenance Care established in nineteen eighty-eight. No amount to come from taxation in two thousand and twenty-one. Tax impact is zero. Um, we've have gone around all three of the cemeteries and identified mostly ash trees that the Emerald Ash Borer has, um, destroyed and killed the trees, where the trees could fall into the cemeteries and hurt the, um, what do you call them?
Gravestones.
The gravestones. And so, most of them were up at the, um, Page's Corner Cemetery. There are a few trees, maple trees over here, and there are a few cherries and pines over at the East Cemetery. Um, we've got proposals as high as twenty-seven thousand to eliminate all trees. All the trees are not on the town's property. Some are on the abutting property landowner. And we have notified them of the trees. And now that they've been notified, if they fall, they will have some liability to it as well. So we're gonna try and work out this with the existing landowners around the cemetery, especially Page's Corner, to see if they'll partially pay for some of the tree removal. So it'll be an ongoing process, I think. Um, and we wanted to put some money towards it this year. And so they came to us and asked to appropriate five thousand dollars for it. And, uh, again, using it out of that maintenance fund. Does anybody have any questions on that? Leo?
Yeah, was that notification in writing?
It was.
Okay.
Yeah, so we're waiting to hear back from them.
At least it's in writing, so.
Yep. Okay, go ahead.
I, I think this is money, money well spent, because if we have any tree damage to graves and, and headstones, that's costly. So this is a, this is a good, good way of spending maintenance dollars that's set aside already.
And I have to concur, and I don't think five thousand is gonna do all the trees he wants to get, and you know that. And that's my, that's my intent with wanting him to look at what they're working with so that they have enough money, so that they don't drain those funds and then have to come back to the taxpayer. And then it'll, it probably will have a caveat after it that says X number of cents increased to
Right.
the tax rate. So that's, that's the only, that's the only problem I have, is I want him to focus on more than just one area.
Yep. Okay, any other public on this warrant? Okay, that being said, I'll bring it back to the board. Uh, Article number fifteen, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all three selectmen vote for that one. Okay, warrant Article number sixteen, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of six thousand, three hundred and fifty...
Oh, I got that wrong. Oh, okay.
Looks like the wording is wrong. Is it the number or the word?
It should be two, no, it's the two thousand.
Okay. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of two thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars for the milfoil control at Gorham Pond, and to authorize withdrawal of one thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars from the Invasive Plant Species Capital Reserve Fund established in two thousand and eighteen, and to authorize the selectmen to accept a grant from the state of New Hampshire, DES, in the amount of eight hundred and fifty dollars, known as the Variable Milfoil Control Grant. No amount to come from taxation. Okay, and speaking with milfoil, um, that pond, as well as all our other, all five of our great ponds, now have no milfoil in them in the town of Dunbarton. Um, this money will go into doing the diving and testing to ensure that it doesn't have any. And, um, we've had several meetings about this, and we've got the numbers, um, straightened away, so there's no money coming from taxation, because we already have money set aside for that. And, uh, do we have anything from the public? Bob, did you wanna speak to it all?
Uh, yeah, no, um, thanks, Dave. Uh, no, thank you everybody for all their help on this. This is, uh, been a good thing for the past couple of years. We've been riding the gravy train. I think it goes back to that, uh, treatment that we got a few years ago, that chemical. And that's been keeping it in check. Uh, we didn't have a Lake Coast, uh, oh, you know, inspection program for the public grant this year because of COVID, uh, last year, I should say. But this year, with the vaccines coming and plant, uh, as long as we get some parent money from the state, we'll hire a hard timer. And then we'll also get some volunteers, so, uh, I'll be looking to get some support on that and advertise the job and look for volunteers and stuff like that. But, uh, no, it's, it's worked out very, very well with the support from the town and, and Lee and, and the board and everybody. So, and the treatment we got, I think, came at the exact right time. The pond's looking really good. All the ponds are looking pretty good.
Oh, go ahead, Bob.
Well, I was gonna say, the other thing too is with that treatment over the past few years, even though we budgeted an amount of money to do some of the reclamation, that wasn't much of to begin with. We ended up putting back money in the fund, and at the same time, we stay on the list of getting the grant. Because once we come off the list, it takes a while to get back on. Correct, Bob?
Yeah, from what I understand, I'm not sure how true that is. It's forty-three towns. Last time I checked with, uh, DES, it's forty-three towns that get grant money. So we're still in good stead with them. Uh, both myself and Lee keeping good touch with Amy, and I'm still in touch with her here for lakes. And like I said, we'll roll up the inspection program with, uh, free hats and t-shirts for anybody that wants to be a Lake Coast. Can spend two hours down there on a Saturday or a Sunday later in the summer. And, uh, so we'll stay on it. But, uh, yeah, we're, we're staying in good stead with the state, and that's not a bad thing to do.
And I'd like to comment also that the state came, we budgeted for divers, and the state came back with a better contract, which saved us a few, all, two more dollars.
That was the original amount, six thousand, two hundred.
Yes.
And so it's a, it's a good working relationship with the state.
Yeah, for some reason, like, we didn't get any, uh, hardly any replies back from, uh, diving organizations. I think we only got one or two.
Yeah.
And fortunately, you know, we got a good number.
Okay, just so the public's aware of it, in the Invasive Plant Species, um, section, there's fifteen thousand, five hundred and eighty-five dollars in that fund right now. Capital Reserve Fund. Okay, any more public comment?
Just the comment, Bob, don't say that you're on a gravy train.
Bad words.
Just trying to help you out. Thanks, John. I mean, you may not have even noticed that you said it.
I hope you did.
I've said things like that before, and they, they've gotten dead. All right.
My table, thanks.
All right, back to the board, all in favor?
Vote in for the board?
Yep, go ahead, I didn't see you. Go ahead, Randy.
Thank you. Um, as you vote on this one, could you make sure that you correct the language?
Um, I did when I reread it. So Lee's gonna make the correction, but I did read it with the correct amount in there of two thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars.
To be clear in the minutes that you voted to correct it language.
Yep.
Yes.
Okay. So, um, going back to the selectmen, all in favor of Article sixteen, using the amount that's written of two thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars in that first sentence?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, the, um, Article seventeen and eighteen are just generic ones that, uh, authorizes auditors, committees, and agents, and transact other business. So that's the review of all of the warrants that was opposed to the town. And we'll have a copy of that impact later on. Now, we're gonna go to the budget sheet.
I don't have that one to share.
Uh, no, it's just, if you go back to the expenses, the last page, it actually describes everything.
This one here, it's up here?
Up there, thanks. Yeah, yeah.
Okay, we're gonna go to this last page on the expenditures, because it has a breakdown, and, um, Lean has provided us a little bit larger copy of it, broken down, like she needs to have it broken down in our computer system. So I'm gonna read through the one that's here, only because it's gonna be a little bit easier for you to follow. So our proposed budget for 2021 is 2,713,248. Our 2020 budget was 2,658,202. The total increase over 2020 is 55,046, so 55,000 dollars basically. The increase is 2.07 percent. Our proposed budget of two, for 2021, of 2,713,248, subtracting our proposed revenues of 2021, which is 1,097,432, leaves us a net to be raised from taxes of 1,615,816. Everybody following those numbers so far? Okay. We've taken 295,082 from our surplus from our previous year's budget, and applied it towards that next net tax amount that needs to be raised, for a final net to be raised from taxes of 1,327,34. Okay.
That comprises of that net.
Yep. To show you where we had received the 295,000 from, the lapse in our operating budget, the excess that was left, was 288,665, and our revenue surplus was 77,335. That gave us a total excess surplus and revenues of 366,000 dollars, of which, we as selectmen chose to put an additional 5% into our DRA, basically the rainy day fund, to keep it at 5% of 67,918. And because our budget was increased by 55,000 dollars over last year's budget, we added an additional 3,000 dollars into that. And that will round off, so where's the 70,000? That will round us off to 70,918, to keep our DRA, the recommended 5%, at our budget, which this board has been trying to do. So the surplus, after that 5% retainage, is 295,082, and we've applied it all right back to your taxes. Is everybody able to follow those numbers?
No, but it, it, it kind of, he, he explained the B to B.
Yep.
Where we got the 295,082 surplus.
So that just explains where we got that under section two B, approved from surplus of 295,000. So operating budget estimated tax rate impact is $3.35. All warrants, if passed, will have an impact of 64 cents. The 2021 town portion of the tax rate will be 3.99. The 2020 town portion of the tax rate was 3.80. The increase in taxes over the 2020 budget is 19 cents. So our possible tax increase, if all the warrants pass, is gonna be 19 cents over last year. Mike, you have a comment?
Just, uh, if our revenues, if COVID was not here, our revenues were on track, like they were from year to year to year, we'd have no impact on taxes. And, uh, we can blame part of this on, on less revenues coming into the Dunbarton, and so we were, we're kinda like stuck with a small tax increase, but it's very small relative.
You should say possible.
Possible, yeah. The thing is, the tax increase is all dependent upon war, all warrants being passed.
And so, our town will have a full, what's the, uh, DRA total gonna be after that lean that we had?
I have that paperwork in front of me. It's gonna be over 500,000, I wanna say it was.
Approximately 5%.
Five, yeah, it's 5%.
Our DRA will be at 5% of our town tax budget, which is what the, uh, what is recommended for our town to do, and so as a board, uh, you know, we came in there, and this fund three years ago was down to 27,000 dollars after the warrants were removed from it. So we brought that up to just about 500,000 dollars over these past three years, and so now, we're in a real good standing where we have that rainy day fund to cover. If a building was to burn down, or we had a major catastrophe, we'd have some funds in our town government to control and protect anything that we needed to do, uh, without wiping out our current year's budget. So that's what's recommended, that's what we've tried to do, and, uh, again, this year, we were able to do that, and still apply 295,082 back to the taxpayers as surplus from the previous year. And, uh, so, uh, we were able to, we were able to keep this, this impact to the taxpayers, uh, very reasonable at 19 cents, I believe. You know, the, the impact is, is virtually not even there, you know, compared to other years that we've had, so.
We need to go back to the warrant.
We have, I'm gonna see if the public, do you guys have any comments on this part of it? Does everybody understand? In the public? Okay. Any questions from our board? Leo, you have any questions?
Nope.
Okay, we're gonna go back to the warrant articles. And we're gonna vote on warrant article four. And the reason we waited on this was to make sure that everybody was in agreement all the way down through the rest of our budget. Okay, article number four on the warrants, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of 2,713,248 dollars for general municipal operations, with 295,082 dollars to come from unassigned fund balance surplus. This amount excludes all appropriations contained in special or individual articles addressed separately. Less estimated revenues of 1,97432, and offset with unassigned fund balance surplus of 295,082, net to be raised from taxes, 1,327,34. Aye, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So article number four. All three selectmen are in favor. That takes care of all of our warrant articles, all of our expenses, and all of our revenues for this coming year. And now Lean can set the tax rate.
No, I can finish the town report. I can set, I can finish the town report.
Um, any further questions on the budget before we close up this part of the hearing? Nothing, John? All right, good enough.
All right, I'm done.
All right.
It's eight twenty.
Yep, that's right.
That's on, close the public.
All right, I'm gonna close the public hearing on the, uh, budget and warrant articles. And I thank you guys all for attending, and you're welcome to stay for the rest of our meeting.
Thank you.
Well said. Good night.
Good night.
Good job, thanks Lean.
You're welcome. Okay, still have Rainey?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm gonna go right down through this thing quickly, though.
So the vote, voting's done?
Yep. I'm gonna go through here and get Jeff straight out of the way now. Right here, move the forest. Okay. Jeff Crosby called me just before this, because he didn't wanna come in for this, um, public hearing on the budget and warrants. Um, they had a meeting the other night, and they reviewed this information on the, um, town forest section of it, and as a board, they made the decision, as Jeff, to contact the people at the Society for the Protection of New Hampshire Forest, directly, and to review it with them. They believe as a board that they are fulfilling, uh, all of the stuff they need to do, and they're in the process of it. And what he explained to me is, they get interns every year that work, um, on this stuff, and they have the interns call and try and clarify and get things squared away with stuff that's been outlined or underlying over the previous years. And so Jeff is gonna call up and try and speak with them directly to see if they can make sure that they are all on track and in compliance, and then he's gonna get back to us after he speaks with them. And he'll go up the ladder, he said, as he needs to, just talk to the people, because they did have meetings before, and they do believe that they are in part of that process. Um, Jeff was also gonna come in to give us some information on the old Route 13, and he said he'll drop that off at the office tomorrow. Did you have a question with him?
All right, come ahead.
Okay.
So that's a future meeting there?
Yeah.
To get that information.
So that's a future meeting. So that takes care of that. Um, town road plowing was on there afterwards, I guess he'll have to commit at a future time for that. Um, he thought that the town road plowing was from a couple of weeks ago, and he thought that was taken care of, so I guess we'll have Lean bring him back to light on that. Okay, now, uh, we're up to Rainey Olet, and we're looking for a town meeting update via Zoom. Rainey, did you want to take in, uh, speak with us about that?
Unmute.
Hold on, Rainey.
You're muted. There you go.
There we go.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, so not, not just about town meeting, but also about the election, also.
Okay.
Um, we'll have to set up for the election on, um, Monday, the eighth, and my, um, my suggestion would be that we do that, as we have in the past, at four o'clock. Um, it's gonna, it, it's gonna be interesting, trying to set up in a way that, um, that satisfies a sense of safety during the election, but also makes the transition from election setup to town meeting setup go fairly smoothly. I anticipate us needing to use the entire gym for the town meeting, with chairs, um, spaced either singly or in pairs, uh, you know, for two people in the same household to sit together, but those, those ought to be spaced six feet apart. Um, if we have 120 people come, as we often have had in the past, we'll not only fill the gym, we'll be needing to use some of the classrooms connected by, um, uh, technology, so we'd be able to see speakers from the classrooms too. Uh, we talked about this when we met with the school board, and, uh, that's the way we're gonna set up for the school district meeting, which is on Saturday, the sixth. Yeah, I'm, I'm worried about the, uh, transition at seven o'clock. You know, we go from voting to, uh, town meeting, and we have, we will have to clear everything about the voting to have enough room, I think.
I think you're right, Rainey, and I think we'll use the people from Woody's department to try and help us in that transition again. Maybe we'll get even more workforce coming down to help. Um, can we pre-mark that floor at the six foot, so we can not think about it, and put a chair right where the tape is marked, or can't we put tape down?
We'll leave, I think we'll be okay with leaving, with putting tape down, um, and we'll, I'll try to get the, uh, the school board to leave, um, that from the school district meeting.
Okay.
Uh, Jeff Traxler is gonna help me with his CAD machine, uh, to, to develop a paper layout for what the meeting will look like. Uh, so, uh, so we'll have that to work with too. I wonder, um, how would you feel about delaying, uh, announcing that we're delaying the start of the town meeting by 15 minutes or so?
Um, I think that as a moderator, you know, you could, you could start that town meeting and then take a, a quick break for setup even, you know, so you started it at seven, but you're gonna be leaving yourself a setup time right at the beginning of your meeting.
Is it nice if, if we didn't have a bunch of people showing up at seven for town meeting, uh, having people in the building will just make setting up more cumbersome?
Then why don't we recommend start it right at 7:30, give yourself a latitude, say town meeting at 7:30, you close voting at, oh, it's already out there, I'm sorry.
It's posted for starting at seven, that's why I'm saying, if you speak right there and start it at seven, and then take a 15 minute setup time, I'm thinking, you know, a lot of times people in this town have been very helpful, setting chairs up, and if the tape is in place, you know, and we direct them, Rainey, I think we can get a lot of help. Um, what I was more concerned about is your, um, when you appoint additional moderators, um, we're obviously gonna be at the town meeting, so we're not gonna be able to help you as selectmen like we've done in the past. So, those individual rooms that they're gonna have set up, the individual classrooms, whether there's five or six, or however many you determine, you'll have to have an assistant moderator in each one of those, from my understanding, correct?
Yeah. Yeah, I haven't spoken to people yet, but I've got a bunch of people in mind. I, I don't see that as being a difficulty. I will, uh, lean on the three of you during the election part of the day, during the voting part of the day.
Yeah, we'll be there for that, as always.
Yeah, but, um, I think, I think I'll be able to rustle up a bunch of assistant moderators. I've been using more assistant moderators in recent years at elections, so it won't strike people, you know, it won't become a surprise.
Right.
Yeah.
Um, and then again, while the school's doing it, as you say, you know, you might find a couple of individuals that do a real good job during that, that you might wanna use again.
Yeah.
You know, so, they're gonna have a layout of the rooms and how they're handling it for the school, so if they do that on the school board, it'd be, you know, really helpful if you could get them to do the town meeting as well.
Yeah. I'm, I'm. So are you all planning to broadcast, um, town meeting?
Yeah, I think we are, that's how it's gonna be set up.
Broadcast to the rooms.
To the different rooms.
No, I meant, I meant, uh, the internet.
Uh, they was, chose not to do that, because they didn't wanna slow it down. They don't wanna have public comment coming from the internet.
Yeah, that's, and, and that, that would be, I'm, I'm not talking about comment, I'm talking about just putting it out there, so that people can watch. We can't have comment, because, uh, to comment, um, at, during town meeting, you have to be a town resident, and you have to be assigned into the meeting, which means you have to have gone, uh, by the supervisors of the checklist, and we can't do that virtually. We don't have a way of doing that right now.
Right, so I thought it was decided that we weren't gonna broadcast it, because people have the right to come there that day.
Yeah, and that, that's, it's your call, I just, I, it's, it's gonna be helpful for me to know if you're gonna try to do that.
Now, I, I, that was not the, I, I agree with Dave, that we were deciding not to broadcast it.
I'm, uh, I've been asked, uh, by people in the community about this, and so I'm gonna send out another one of my blasts on the, uh, town, um, community Facebook page, and through the school, and through the library, uh, explaining, uh, how it's gonna go. And, and I'm gonna say that, uh, that you all have decided not to broadcast.
And you know, you can say right on there, Rainey, the fact that, that they wouldn't be able to comment is our reason why, because. that they wouldn't be able to comment is our reason why, because, you know, you don't have the profit.
I'll explain it, and I'll explain the complications about being able to check in. That the questions I received, uh, some people want to be able to stay home and participate in town meeting. We're just not set up to do that yet.
And so that's why we're opening up the classrooms, so that we have enough room for anybody that wants to come, as they normally do in this small town.
Yeah. And, uh, one of the classrooms will be designated for people who, uh, will, won't wear a mask, so that, um, you know, they'll have a, an opportunity to participate as well. The school district may, uh, they're still looking at whether it'd be possible for them to, um, what, what's the Google platform? That's like Zoom?
Google, Google Meet.
Google Meet?
Yeah, Google Meets, yeah, they're, they might do that. Um, they are clear that that would be a watch-the-meeting-only kind of option for the people who choose to use it. When we had the, um, the budget hearing, um, at the school district, um, meeting, I mean, at, at the school board meeting last night, the technology was not ready for what we're trying to do. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna be working with, uh, Jeff mostly, to try to, to get that ready and to go. Um, like I said, the, the benefit that you all have is that there'll be a dry run of the school district meeting, dry run from your point of view, live run from their point of view. But, um, so we'll see what bugs remain. We're going to do, we're gonna go do a test of the system at some point, and I would invite at least one of the selectmen to come and see that, so you're familiar with how it's gonna go, uh, during the meeting.
Yeah, it'd be great if you could let us know when it is, we can, you know, decide to make it.
Can I ask you a question?
Yep.
So, Rainey, you have, you've participated in, on Google Meet and Zoom. Do you see that there's a difference between either program? Do they run about the same?
You know, I haven't really seen Google Meets at, at work well, yet, so I'm not, I'm not that familiar with it. My experience with Zoom has been pretty good.
Yeah, and-
Yeah, all the way to, um, Zoom meetings with 250 moderators participating. Oh, there's one where there was like 375 moderators and county clerks all participating.
So is there a way that you can convince the school board to use Zoom rather than Google Meet?
Um, I don't see it as my place to try to do that.
Oh, okay.
And if we're not gonna do it, we don't need to worry about it.
Right, okay.
Okay, I think, uh-
The only thing is, we're gonna have to, the video feed will be Zoom to the classrooms?
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah, and the thing is, I would rather have a smaller platform, and when I say platform, a smaller number, than, than have it go, go south on us.
Yeah, and those, those won't be available to the public, because it would boggle the system.
Right, 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 I agree.
It's actually not Zoom.
Okay.
It's an internal-
They're using a different platform within the school.
Okay.
Okay.
Classroom connects or something.
But those people are actually gonna be voting members of the public.
I'm, I'm sorry, could you say that again?
Those people in the classrooms are actually gonna be voting members of the public.
Yes, absolutely. They'll have to go through the supervisors and get their green card, absolutely.
Okay, um, if you think of anything else we need to do as a board to get ready for that, let us know, and we'll try and be present if you let us know when that, um, dry run will be.
Okay.
And Woody's on line two.
Woody, I'm expecting I'll see you and/or some of your minions on the 8th at 4:00.
And Woody, um, you know, what about a, a 6:45 setup to show up there with a bunch of your guys to help place the chairs in the appropriate spots?
You know, um, I, my plan is to use, um, I won't, I won't be extending the voting space into the other half of the gym.
Yep.
When we set up, I'm gonna try to keep it in half the gym, and that way, we're gonna set up the other half of the gym for, for the meeting. So that will already be set up.
So where everybody's gonna be working, do you want to have Woody help set that up at that time?
I'm, we're gonna set that half of the gym up on Monday.
Okay.
Look, and so there will be nothing to do until 7:00, when I close the polls. And right at 7:00, we're, we're gonna have to move all sorts of stuff.
Right, so do you want Woody's help, is what I'm trying to ask you, Rainey? At 7:00?
Yeah, but I'm, I'm not sure at 6:45, you, you'll be, you'll be twiddling your thumbs, 'cause you'll be waiting for the polls to close, to be able to do anything.
Yeah, but I'd rather have him there at 6:45 than 7:05.
So Dave, Dave likes for you to twiddle your thumbs, wouldn't he?
Yeah, I hope. You've got one half of the gym that would be available.
Can I ask a question, Rainey? Um, is it possible for you to do a survey during the course of the day, asking people if they'll be coming with their spouse? Or alone? That way you can kind of set up two chairs, single chairs, get a feeling of-
I think, um, when I saw, uh, some other towns do for their SB2 meetings that have already been held, is they just set it up so that one row was a single chair, and next row was two chairs, and the third row a single chair and two chairs. And if there happened to be a single sitting in a double chair, yeah, so what?
Okay.
I, I'm just glad that we have a boring budget, there's nothing terribly controversial. And that the election is a boring election, no, no, no contested elections.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Again.
It's gonna be boring, yes.
So, um, the, the governor, um, made a, um, one of his declarations that extended the law, that allowed us to process absentee ballots ahead of time. Partially processed. We'll be able to do that again. And there's a bill in the Senate, SB2 this year, that would, uh, do that by law. So one way or another, we're gonna be able to get to do it. Um, and, and that went well enough, um, at, to the two elections that we used that ability, that I would suggest we do it again. That sound okay to you, Linda?
Mute.
You're muted.
Linda, you're muted.
No, she's not.
Do you have her muted, Lynn?
No, it, Donna, no, she's not.
It doesn't look like she's muted there, no.
You're speaking very softly.
A thumbs up?
Sign language.
Yeah? So, can't, can't hear you. So, um, uh, yes, does that sound good? To pre-process again? Yeah, okay. No?
She said yes, then, uh-
She's gonna, I, I asked her to use the chat at the bottom, I don't know if she'll-
So, um, while we're waiting on that, if we do that, we'll need one of the selectmen again.
Okay, I'll volunteer Mike again.
No, I can't close up.
Oh, jeez. All right, Bob, around, toss a coin.
I'm thinking, yeah, I'm thinking that it would be good to do that on the 8th during the day.
Jeez, we couldn't, why can't you? All right. I have one time.
She said, I don't think that we'll have that many this year, we can decide later.
And it's true, we don't have to decide tonight.
Oh.
Yeah. Yeah, so if, if we end up with five or 10, why, why spend part of Monday doing that? Okay, that makes sense.
I'll volunteer if there's only five or 10.
What would, what would be before the election? And I'll be in touch with everybody, and we'll, we'll make sense of it.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay.
Rainey, just as an FYI, separate subject. A separate subject, we're, tonight, we'll be signing a request to the Governor's Council to ask for a special election to replace the state representative, which is vacant.
Yeah, who were, who resigned?
It was, uh, Fox, Samantha Fox. In fact, she's moved out of state, I believe, already.
So we've communicated with the town of Bo, Mike has, through their select office, and their office, to see what they wanted to do, and we're gonna go ahead and move forward as a, as a select board tonight, sign the paperwork to get that in the process.
Yeah, but any idea when that election might be held?
After April.
Says they have up to 180 days to respond to us.
Oh, okay.
All right, the thing is, I want to give kudos to the, to our town clerk who's working with me to get in touch with the state. Thank you to Linda, thank you.
I'm sure there's a meeting up where we can't hear her.
She says thank you.
Maybe we should do that with you guys.
Uh, that's, that was pretty much my list.
Okay, thank you, Rainey. Um, nothing else for the board? Okay, appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna move on to mailbox items, and then we'll open it back up for public comment after that. Okay. Mike, you were just speaking about this. Comes the attention of Dunbar and Selectman, one of our state representatives, Samantha Fox, has resigned from her elected position. We wish to ask for a special election, election to fill this vacancy. And, um, so we're gonna send that to the executive council. Um, all in favor as a board to do that?
Yeah.
Aye.
All right, I'll sign that. Send it on to Mike.
Lynn, could I ask one in favor?
Yeah.
Could you make a, a copy of this and send it over to the Bo town clerk?
Yeah, I can do that.
And Mike, I appreciate your work this week trying to get that squared away for us as a town.
You're very welcome. I just want to say that it was a pleasure working with David Scanlon, the Deputy, uh, Secretary of State, he was a gentleman to talk to. He sent me straight in about a few minutes.
Okay. Uh, we have a town employee that has passed their six-month probation on their town, um, job, for a part-time, part-time, um, employment up to transfer station. So later on, I'd like to meet with the board and just discuss that job, and review that with the department head.
That's a request from Woody?
Yeah, that's a request from Woody. Woody's own. Also, Woody has a, a shingled roof that is getting worse, and he'd like to look at getting that replaced. Um, we do have a quote on file, so at the same time, if you could ask him to bring that quote in with him. Um, let's take a look at that and try and get that updated for him.
He's, he's listening in, so I'm sure, but I'll make sure I remind him.
Okay, so what are, what are our meetings that's a little lighter, Woody? I'll have you come in, and then we'll bring Ed in and do a review with him on that. Okay. This was an informational piece we got in reference to conducting these Zoom meetings and how they're posted, and, uh, we've all reviewed that as selectmen. Thanks for sending that to us. I have filled out the selectman's message, passed it into the town administrator and the other selectman. Uh, they've given us a thumbs up, so that'll be part of the town report. We have the test from 41 Kimmel Pond Road, done by Ray Damaris, and, uh, the test from Optimal Analytical Consulting. It does look like there's some asbestos in the building. It's in the kitchen linoleum at 41 Kimmel Pond Road. There's only one layer, and the adhesive had a small amount in it as well. So he's gonna give me a company that is used to removing that, we're gonna get that removed so we can continue with the demolition of the building. All the other sections, uh, had no asbestos in them.
If it's over 1,000, we're gonna probably need two quotes.
Yeah, I would think, well, we go over 1,000, but, yeah, we'll look at and see, I don't think it'll be that much, only because it's a small area. Nice thing he said about this building is we're not trying to protect anything. They need to remove a cabinet, a wall, whatever they need to do to get it out easy, they can do. So, um, I'll get ahold of that company, he's gonna provide us with a name, and, um, I'll, I'll try and bring it back to the board, so we can make a vote on it, thank you, Dave. Lynn, give me a copy of this MS 636, this'll be in our bins, we can look at it. She has to take, and she filled in all the numbers here from our proposed budgets onto this, and that's what's gonna, gonna be looked at by the accountant, correct?
Correct. So this is actually in draft format, but tonight's vote will update that, and I'll have a final version that needs to be posted with your warrant, and I'll have that ready for you to sign next Thursday.
Okay, and we received a letter in from Pansyaco Law in reference to Old Route 13. And I'm gonna put this on next week's agenda. Chris, can you hear me okay? I'd like to have you come to our next week's meeting. Uh, we're gonna have some discussion in reference to Old Route 13, where they've had some civil actions going on there with stuff being parked in the town right of way. And, um, we're gonna take as a board and read through this paperwork from the two different attorneys, we've partially read it now, and there was a previous selectman's vote on it. And, um, we're gonna look at the previous vote and maybe reaffirm some stuff, and so that way there, your department will have a written letter from the board knowing what the rights are for the town and how the police can respond on that section.
Am I supposed to invite those parties to the meeting?
Yes, we are.
Okay.
So both parties need to be invited through their law firms, and I'd like Chris to come, so he can notify his officers of our decision. I'll be there, thank you. Okay, thank you. Um, the last thing is the letters we have on the Winslow Town Forest gravel pit reclamation, and, uh, that's an ongoing process with the Town Force Committee. So that takes care of mailbox items. Now I'm gonna open up for public comment.
I do not, thank you.
Anything from the public or the Zoom comments? Okay, bring it to the town administrator.
I have nothing for them.
Okay, I want to thank you, um, on behalf of the board for all your work, I've seen you here 7:00 or 8:00 o'clock at night. Working several nights when I'm driving by, and, uh, so getting all this paperwork together, I know is a hectic time of year for you, and, uh, the board appreciates it, and, uh, we'll be talking in the future about some things to do, maybe give you a few days off that's not part of your normal vacation to, uh, try and give you a little bit of a break here, 'cause I know that this time of year is hectic, and with the COVID information we've had to process this year, becomes stressful for everybody. Donna, do you have anything for the board, trigger? I want to give our appreciation for you being here tonight to help run this Zoom meeting, it's been, uh, it's ran very smoothly, and we're, it took a lot of pressure off Lynn by having you here and running that end of it and not having her to have to worry about it.
I do, thank you.
From the other selectman.
Can we have him come out there?
Well, I'm just, I'd like to see Don Larson here at our next meeting.
Yep.
So we can, uh, educate him, or whatever it takes, so he can understand that if you're gonna do something, you need to, on town property, you need to come and see us before you do it.
Right.
You know, 'cause we had that discussion last week, and I thought we got our message across, and it doesn't seem that way. And so when you have someone that complains about something, we have to do some kind of action.
Can I make a suggestion, only 'cause next week is gonna be kinda crazy with you today?
Well, you're not gonna be able to do anything now, because you're gonna have him here, but, I mean-
Well, what I'd like to do is send a letter out to Don. It looks like, uh, what Bob is referencing is when we came in tonight, we extended the lights out on the common till the end of February, and we saw on the,
gazebo.
Far end of the common on the gazebo that there were some Valentine lights put up instead of Christmas lights, and nobody had asked the board about changing the lights, even though we extended it till the end of February. And just a point of order, Bob, would like that the Board of Selectmen be aware of anything going on within the town commons here. And so, we're gonna send a letter out to Don Larson, only 'cause we're gonna have two different attorneys present, uh, the road agent next week, and, uh, Chris Rembley, and I know that our room's gonna fill up a little bit.
Well, and the other thing, too, is they took the lights off the gazebo.
To put the other ones on?
No, not to put the other ones on, because those were the lights that one of the neighbors didn't want to see, if you remember. That's why they came down. And now we've got lights on it again.
Weren't their lights on during Christmas?
We have neighbors that don't like the idea that there's lights there, you know, so, and they're the ones that should have probably responded to Facebook, saying, I live there, not in my backyard, you know?
That's why we don't have to use Facebook as a, as a mechanism of governance. We don't govern by Facebook.
Are you okay sending him a letter, 'cause next week is gonna-
Right, it's gonna, it's gonna be kinda too late, isn't it? You know what I mean? And, uh, but-
Well, maybe the following-
But again, last week we met him halfway.
Are you asking me to ask him to take him down? Is that what you're asking, or are you?
I, I'd like to see him go down, only because last week we met him halfway.
Right.
Right? And that was beyond what you wanted. And that was beyond what you wanted to do and what Mike wanted to do.
Yeah.
And, but we ran him the riot act and it had no impact. It's like a little kid that says, let me do it first and I'll ask them after.
Yeah.
You know, it's, it's gone to that route.
But I would like him not to come into our meeting next week because we're just going to have too many people in this one.
So we have consensus to ask him to remove the lights, that's what Lee's asking. I think so.
Yes.
Yeah. I mean, I, again, I don't think it was done within a little ten, I just didn't think it through probably.
I, I concur with that, but some, sometimes you just got to think it through.
Okay, anything else for the board?
We have a non-public I think we have to go to?
We do?
Nope, okay, then good.
Maybe I didn't take that off there.
Okay. That being said, I'm going to call to adjourn the meeting at 8:53. Do I have a second?
I second.